It's on.
What is it? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And welcome to the 2017 League of Women Voters Edina School Board Forum. I'm Colleen Feige. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters Edina, and I'm a former school board member. So candidates, I know how you're feeling. It's not a great feeling, but you'll do fine. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, a nonpartisan volunteer organization, and we do not support candidates or political parties. But we do work to empower, grow, and protect the vote. And with our wonderful group of candidates, this is a very large slate, I want to turn this over very quickly to our moderator, Jerry Nelson, who is with the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids, correct?
Mm-hmm.
League of Women Voters. So Jerry, I will turn it to you and our candidates, and enjoy. Thank you, everyone.
I'm Jerry Nelson, and this is the second time I've been in Edina to do a forum, and it's always nice to see the participation of everyone in the community, and the participation of so many candidates, it really says something about the city of Edina. A few, Susan Clark, the first vice president and voter service chair, has a couple of words to say just before we start.
You'll notice that some candidates are sitting on a lower diocese. That's because we have 12 candidates. That's the only way we could fit people in here. Please don't think of them as less worthy or anything else. Their names were picked out of random. We said, "This is the first position, this is the first name. This is the second position, the second name." All the way through to the 12. So please, listen to them and give them their respect. Thank you.
We request that there be no talking by the audience during the forum, because we have people sitting out in the foyer, and we want to make sure that everybody can hear. Okay, the purpose of this forum tonight is to provide an opportunity to hear candidates from, for District 273 School Board. They will discuss issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have, but if your questions are not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. All 12 candidates who filed for office are here tonight, thank you very much, and they will be on the November 7th ballot. You will be electing four of these candidates for four-year terms. Let me explain the rules of the forum tonight. As Susan Clark noted, the speaking order was randomly assigned before the forum, and will rotate randomly with each question. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement, one minute to answer questions set out in advance, 45 seconds to answer each question submitted by the audience, and one minute to make a closing statement. League volunteers will time the candidates and indicate to the candidates when they have 45 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when they must stop. Audience questions must be in writing and handed to a volunteer that is wearing a League button, and the forum will include lightning rounds, where each candidate will be asked to give a brief one-word or one-sentence answer to the question, always hard for someone running for office. But I'll enforce it, so don't try to cheat. As a moderator, I will be asking all the questions, and the League of Women Voters Edina determines which questions will be asked and attempts to cover as many topics of interest as possible. All written questions become the property of the League Women Voters Edina. So, as this program is being video recorded, we ask that you not applaud until the very end of the forum. Okay, I'm going to let the candidates introduce themselves to you tonight, and so we're going to start right away here with Chris Tischer, and he, and I'm not going to say your names this time, I will the rest of the time, but just go right down the line. Chris.
Thank you. All right, so my name is Chris Tischer. I've been an Edina resident now for a little over two years, but have been a part of the Edina school community for longer than that. We got engaged with Edina by wanting to have our children attend the best schools in Minnesota. So, we open and rolled our daughter at Countryside Elementary when she was in kindergarten, and she's been there ever since. We moved to Edina to continue that and become more and more of the community, and this was another opportunity for me. I've had an opportunity to participate in the community as part of the Edina Soccer Association, coaching my daughter's soccer team for the last two years, but also looking at opportunities to get more involved and have a positive impact on our children's educational future as well. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Chad Bell. This is my second tour of duty as an Edina resident. I spent my first six years out of college, living in, over in the Parkland area, then I did a sojourn over to Minneapolis, and after I got married, my wife and I moved back to the east side of Edina, where we resided for 12 years now. We have a seventh grader at Southview, and we have a second grader at Concord. Our life in Edina has been very blessed, you know, it's a wonderful community with wonderful resources. I've been fortunate enough that I have been coaching soccer for seven years through the association similar to Chris. I have 30 seconds. Okay, I've also spent most of my time in the schools, helping out reading and things like that. The reason I'm running is simply that I love our community. I've gotten to know a lot of kids through the coaching program, and they mean a lot to me, as do the schools. I think the schools are the fundamental reason people live in this town, and it's important that we keep them strong and vibrant in the future, and I believe that my skillset can help do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Faisal Deery. I want to first and foremost appreciate the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. It's a wonderful event that engages the community and shows the level of engagement, and I also appreciate that we have over 10 candidates running, that shows you that our community is committed and involved and engaged. So I've moved to, my wife and I moved to Edina about a little over a year, but we have lived in this neighborhood about a little over 20 years. My, our oldest three sons graduated from Hopkins High School, they start kindergarten at Hopkins High School. I have now my daughter, who is at the high school, and also I have a son at Valley View. And the reason I'm running is because I have a passion for education. I grew up in East Africa, where it's hard, even sometimes, you know, students learn when they cannot even have an electricity, so I used to study sometimes, you know, under the streetlights. So that passion is what keeps me going, and that's the passion I want to bring to Edina public schools.
Hi, I'm Matt Laux. My wife and I moved to Edina for the great schools, and we are-
Happy to have three students currently in the district, one at Valley View and two at Normandale. I am running for school board for a variety of reasons. First, I want to make sure we are maintaining a high level of academic excellence and rigor for all students, while ensuring all students are supported, respected, and challenged. Second, I think the board needs to improve its transparency with regards to how it decides things, and better engage the community in thoughtful, in a thoughtful way. I am licensed to teach ESL, and I know the importance of setting a high academic bar and supporting students to reach those goals. I have served on a school board before, and I have 15 years' experience in the finance industry. In short, I have the classroom experience, the school board experience, and the business experience. I've volunteered to host interns at our house, fundraisers at our house, and I've coached Edina soccer, basketball, and baseball. I would appreciate your support.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew Fox, and I'm proud to live in Edina. My family and I moved here to be part of this engaged community and attend the wonderful schools. Right now, we're going through a lot of change in Edina. We have construction going on that'll affect the way that our teachers teach. We have different curriculum adjustments going on that'll affect the way that our students learn. And we have new leadership in terms of two new principals, a new superintendent, and up to four different new school board members that'll be joining to lead us into the next growth path. For me, in 2018, what I think we need to do is communicate well and openly and transparently with our community, understand what the needs are, and build a really strong operating plan in 2018 that'll make sure that every student can reach their full potential. For me, I was the head of corporate strategy at a pharmaceutical company, where we built long-term operating plans and executed on them. Now as CEO of a biotech company doing research for children with rare disease, I work closely with families and foundations to understand their needs. So I believe that I bring a unique experience to the Edina school board. I thank you for being here today. Since it's recorded, foxforedina.com is where there's more information, since we have 40 seconds. And thank you, I'm out of time.
Well, hello, everyone. I first want to thank the Edina League for hosting this and for all the voters for coming out. My name is Gabe Aderhold, and I've lived in Edina for over 22 years. I graduated from Edina High School five years ago, and just recently graduated from the University of Minnesota. And I hope to bring a recent student's voice to our school board. I understand both the successes our school district have faced, but also the challenges in the classroom. Our teachers are growing more overwhelmed, our class sizes are growing, and balancing both that academic excellence, but also stress and mental health issues that our students face. And I want to make sure that we move forward with our schools, ensuring both a new era of engagement and transparency, and that's why I've advocated for town hall meetings and open conversations with constituents in all of our neighborhoods and underrepresented communities. My website is gabeforedina for those at home, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
I'm Ellen Jones, and I'm running for school board because I'm passionate about public education and the future of our kids. 25 years ago, my husband Bob McElveen and I moved to Edina, and we are proud to have had our three kids go through our schools. I waited until my youngest child graduated to run for the board, so that I could make this my full-time job. I have a degree in economics from Northwestern University, and I love to dive into the numbers and details. In the schools, I have worked on a district advisory council, site council, and PTO. I successfully got the district to allow Southview students access to the same high school classes that were available to Valley View students. I was on the park board for six years and worked to create the city's park strategic plan, and chaired the hornet's nest, which brought much-needed updates to our ice arena. I was, to learn more about what I've done, please go to my website. My experience proves that I truly care about our kids and our community, and that I will do the work and can get the job done.
Hi, my name's Heidi Hilliker. I'm a former student of Edina High School and a mother of two. In the, live in the community, I have a son who's at ninth grade at the high school, who's really enjoying this new opportunity of learning there, as well as I have a second grader at Cornelia. The reason that I want to run is that we have a voice for all of our schools within our community. I think it's a great opportunity to ensure that we're all represented, whether it's Cornelia, Concord, Highland, Normandale. We need to, we need to put in place well-supported policies that allow every student to learn, create, and invent new, the new world they'll be establishing. This means we need to make good on our promise that education will be made available on equal terms, and that all and every student will realize their productivity life, or productive life. Our teachers, coaches, administration, community, and our students all care about our future and have valuable ideas, and that's why I'd like to ensure that we hear those valuable ideas. And some experience that I've had is Cornelia, it's been on the PTO. I've brought together a Read-a-thon to the school, which has gone on for the past seven years. I've been engaged in the PTO, and have been a parent and love the school systems here.
Good evening. My name's David Goldstein. I'd like to first also thank the League for hosting this event and all the work that they put into it. My wife, Mary, and I have lived in Edina for over 25 years. We've raised three children here, who participated in the public schools from our early childhood education as infants through to graduation from high school, with my youngest graduating this past May. It has been an honor to serve our students, our children, their families, our community on the school board for the past three and a half years, and I frankly have loved the opportunity to do it. There are things that I care about passionately. Some of those things are improving and bringing more STEM and STEAM opportunities into our schools, helping students with more productive options as seniors, and options for those who don't necessarily want to go on to a four-year college, making sure that our arts programs are well-supported, improving our world language programs. There's a lot of things, I hope we'll get to talk about more of them tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Owen Michelson. My wife and I have four children. We have had a child in Edina schools since 1999. That's 18 consecutive years, with six more to go. We, as a family, have received a lot from Edina schools, especially from its marvelous, caring, and hard-working teachers, and I think it's time for me to give back. I'm running to put education first in Edina schools, so we equip our students with the skills and knowledge and critical thinking they'll need to be ready for college, work, and citizenship. We want our schools to teach our students how to think, not what to think. This commitment is especially critical in the face of a five-year trend of declining test scores in reading and math at Edina High School on the prominent statewide MCA tests. To reverse this trend and to prepare our students well for life, education must be our first task.
Good evening. I'm Lisa O'Brien, and I am running for reelection to the Edina school board. My qualifications are listed on my brochure that you can pick out in the back, but for those of you who are watching at home, I am completing my first term on the Edina school board. I currently sit on seven different committees, and I'm chair of teaching and learning. Before I joined the board, I earned my PhD in child development and child clinical psychology. I have eight years' experience doing research in, with children that are high-risk. I have four years' experience in pediatric psychology, identifying strengths and weaknesses in children and their backgrounds, and I have nine years' experience on Greater Minneapolis Crisis Nursery. I have lived in Edina 21 years. I have three kids that have gone at every level. I've been a dedicated volunteer at all those levels. I am running because I have benefited from the public schools. I, I need to give back, it's what I believe, and I'm also running because there is a lot of change. We have a completely new team at, in our district, and we need to make sure that we are launching this new team on the straight path and not to wander from our, our primary mission, which is our children's education and their intellectual growth. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica Allenberg. I have three children, one that just graduated, one that's in seventh grade, and one that's in fourth grade at Creek Valley. I've also parented children with extremely different educational needs, one that's gifted, one that has special education needs, and one that falls right within the middle but is super hardworking. So I understand all the diverse educational needs in our community. I have a long track record of successful hard work in this district and community. Among other things, I was Creek Valley PTO president, I am an Edina A Better Chance host parent, and I was recently given the Edina Community Foundation's Connecting with Kids Leadership Award on behalf of working with children in our community with learning differences. In my prior life, I worked for GE Capital as a marketing director and was in their management development program to groom future leaders at their company, where I learned skills such as project management and process improvement training. I'd like to take my passion for education and my skillset and bring it to make a positive difference to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Owen. We're going to start with a question that the candidates got beforehand. They will have one minute to answer it, and here it is. How do you define equity in education? And we'll start with Gabe Aderhold.
When we talk about equity in education, there's a buzzword that often comes up, and that is opportunity. But I really believe that equity in education is about outcomes, and I want to provide an example. Here in Edina, we have Edina Give and Go, Edina Ed Fund, we have Young Scholars Program. We have excellent opportunities for students, but yet, outcomes are not equal right now in our district. We know students of color and students of lower socioeconomic means are not performing at the level of some of their peers. And so I believe that we need to start looking at outcomes. We need to talk about transportation, we need to talk about affordable housing needs, we need to talk about the stigma that's associated with checking that box to get free and reduced lunch. And so I believe that we need to start looking deeper at some of those systemic issues in providing equitable outcomes for all of our students. So opportunity matters, but we have that here. We need to start talking about outcomes.
Okay. Heidi Hilliker, define equity in education.
All right. Equity in education is really not a cookie cutter explanation. Equity in education is different for every individual. We as a community need to recognize and provide access to all academic, athletic, enriched, and extracurricular opportunities for all of our students, no matter the race, abilities, gender, financial, sexual orientation, or legal status. It shouldn't just stop there. We should challenge ourselves to constantly seek better ways, to, better ways doing things through participation and community involvement. We have to put in place a well-supported policies allowing every student the ability to learn and create and invent the new world they'll be living in. This means we need to take a good at our, we need to be good at our promise that education will be made available to all, equal terms, and that every student will realize a productive life.
Thank you. Erica Allenberg, please.
I think too often we define equity in terms of racial, racial or socioeconomic groups and bucket children into predetermined categories. And while this is important for data tracking and goal-setting purposes, it can also lead to perceived inequities and polarization in the community. Is one group getting more than another group? I would like to urge our community to look at equity as something that can unite us, not divide us. Not as a group or demographic, but as one child. Each individual child that enters any school here in Edina deserves the same shot at success, and how you get to that success can take many different tracks. My son with a learning disability has very different learning requirements than other students. That is the beauty and the challenge of public education, merging children from all different backgrounds and abilities and giving them not only the same opportunities, but working towards equity and outcomes. A student's success in school is a great predictor of their success in life. Equity should not be one person's or family's challenge, but a challenge for all of us, for the greater good of the children that walk through the doors of our schools every day.
Thank you. David Goldstein.
Thank you. So I think all of the definitions I've heard of equity so far make sense to me, and I don't know how useful it is to try to give other definitions. I think the most important questions here are, to ask of a board member are, how important is equity to you and to the school, and how do you accomplish it? And you'll, first, to be very clear, I think equity is critically important, and at the board, we have been trying to look at everything through an equity lens and figure out how to do things better. The second thing that we don't talk enough, talk about enough when we talk about equity is that it's not just talking about what the person needs, what the student needs to succeed, it's about finding out what our own limitations are when we're trying to assess what they need. It's about our own biases, our own misunderstandings, our own blind spots, because we come from a different culture, or background, or set of abilities. And part of what the district is trying to do is make sure that all of our teachers, administrators, everyone understands how to approach this and do it constructively.
Thank you. Ellen Jones, please.
Every student should have the same opportunity for resources and services. That doesn't mean that they will all get the same resources, but equity means they will get the resources they need. Equity in education also has a broader meaning. It means that all voices will be heard and respected. Equity is more like a journey than a destination. The journey seeks commonalities, respect, and compassion for each student in the community, and the goal is to have all students inspired to reach their potential. In practice, equity in education is when teachers and staff are responsive to all students and make all students feel that they are included and belong to our community without giving up who they are.
Thank you. Matthew Fox.
Well, those are some great insights, so I would have liked to go first on this one. Everyone did a great job explaining, I think, what students need and kids need to excel and reach their individual highest potential. So I'll try to take a bit of a different tilt about one thing I think about with equity. When we think about trying to implement something that's going to be able to help every student, everyone doesn't need the exact same thing, and I know that's well-understood. But one thing we must do is trust our teachers, and make sure our teachers have the resources in the classroom to be able to assess what each student needs. In our district, we have lots of different people from lots of different backgrounds, and from the perspective of making sure that a student who perhaps can't get to the meal plan they need, or can't get there in time in the morning, might need a bit more of a check-in in the morning to make sure they're centered for the day and that they can get all the information they need, while somebody else who gets there earlier arrives prepared to start the day. So I think one thing that's important in terms of equity is making sure at a board level, and at administration, and at a teacher level, we're properly resourced to make sure that each child can reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Laux.
Equity in education, in my opinion, means providing each student, regardless of ability, race, or socioeconomic background, the opportunity to reach their academic potential. Academic goals should be developed by educators in conjunction with their students, with an emphasis on achievable growth and an eye towards developing increased self-confidence and perseverance. The single most important factor to achieve this success is access to quality instruction led by educators, not technology. As an educator myself, who has created plans for a diverse group of students, I know firsthand the men, the power of maintaining a high academic bar and providing the scaffolding that students need to achieve success in the classroom.
Thank you. Lisa O'Brien.
When I read this question, I looked at it from a success lens. What will it look like, or how will we know, when we have achieved equity in education? So I believe when every student receives the resources and supports that they need to be prepared for the life they desire post-graduation, we will have equity. When systemic barriers to success are removed, we will have equity. When every student has access to high academic standards, we will have equity. When every student feels free to express their voice and that it is heard and valued, then we have equity. When we have an educational system that adapts to the needs of the student and not the other way around, we will have equity. When outcomes are not dependent on who you are, or how you look, or what you believe, we will have equity. Thank you.
Owen Michelson, please.
Equity says that in our essence, we are equal, while acknowledging our differences, such as experience, heritage, race, gender, inclination, ability, and interests. Educationally, it serves all kids at the level at which they need to be served, whether it be special services or gifted and talented supplements. Culturally, in Edina schools, it is all for all, which lives up to Martin Luther King's admonition that we focus less on the color of our skin and more on the content of our character. It strives to be colorblind and inspires to be, see race as an incidental consideration against the backdrop of our common humanity. At Edina schools, all our kids are equally loved, equally important, and we seek to send them off into the world eager to embrace their place in one brotherhood, in one sisterhood of humanity.
Thank you. Faisal Deery.
So defining, I think there was a lot of good definitions, but what I want to also add in addition to that, when we want to define equity in education, it means that we need to meet every child where they are. So if there are students that are performing above their level grade, we need to make sure that we meet them where they are, and if there are students, and we do have that, are not meeting at their level grade, we need also to support our teachers and administrators. And when I say that our teachers are the best skill and we have the best teachers in Edina, so we need to empower our teachers and make sure that that empowerment comes with, that they come up with a solution for those students that are not meeting. But it does not mean that education means whether you, whether your background, or financial status, or your race. It means that every child has a God-given potential, and every child in Edina has the potential to succeed. So we need to meet them where they are, and we need to make sure that we trust our teachers and administrators and take politics out of this equation.
Thank you. Chris Tischer.
Thank you. So when I think of equity, I think of two things. Primarily, I think of the removal of obstacles. So, you know, all of us are different, all of our students are different, and we need to look at it as an, at an individual level, and find out what we can do for each one of our students to remove those obstacles so that they can be successful. It doesn't always mean giving all of the resources to everyone equally. It's, again, finding the differences between our students and empowering our teachers and our administration to look at those differences, embrace those differences, and find ways that we can ensure that those differences don't become obstacles for our students, but rather help them along in their educational future. Thank you.
And finally, Chad Bell.
So first, I'd like to thank Matt Laux, because I love your definition. It was the same one I wrote down, so well done. So there's been a lot of great definitions, so I won't overdo that, but here's what I would like to point out. We live in a wonderful community, and we have wonderful resources at our disposal, and it is frankly our duty, not just as a school board or school, but as a community, to make sure that we're educating our kids to the best of our ability. If we don't do that, we frankly- If we don't do that, we frankly have let ourselves down. I have kids that perform at multiple different levels. I look at this as not so much, I look at this as a macro issue. And the importance here is we don't give up on people, and that we find solutions, and we constantly are challenging ourselves to see how we can get the best performance out of our kids. And so from that standpoint, I think what we'll, to answer Lisa's point earlier, we'll know when we've achieved equity, and we don't have to talk about it, which means the results have improved to the point where we are happy with the output that we're getting, and we're proud of what we've done, and we don't want to stop until we get there. Thanks.
Okay, our first audience question is, "Some residents feel that there's a lot of racism that goes on in Edina that is not being dealt with. What would you do to change that? At what grade level would you start introducing concepts such as white privilege or institutional racism?" Lisa O'Brien, we'll start with you.
I heard "what grade level introduce," and I'm sorry, the second part?
At what grade level would you start introducing concepts such as white privilege or institutional racism?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, I missed half of it. I do think that we have been making strides in looking towards equity and access to services in our community. But when I talk to community members, of which this is very personal to them, I often hear that it's a lot of lip service, that we talk about it, but we don't actually do the work. And so I will say that, as we mentioned it here before, there are systemic reasons that we may not be aware of, that we need to look at, as teachers, as staff, as board members. We also have to, and community members, we also have to make sure that we make sure that students' freedom of speech and rights are not impinged on by anyone else, and that each person's voice, no matter what they look like, is respected.
Thank you. Gabe Adherhal.
As a person of color growing up in Edina, I think of some of the challenges that that has brought, and also how rewarding of an experience it has been. And I'm running for school board because I love this community and I believe in this community. But I understand what it feels like to sometimes be discredited or have impacts of racism that still exists today. And I want to make sure that as a community, we're listening to our students of color and our families of color, and that when we hear that there might be a problem, that we believe them and that we work towards common goals to help address those problems. As for the second question about when is it appropriate to talk about these conversations, I really do trust our teachers, and I believe that our teachers know when it's appropriate and when it's not.
Thank you. Heidi Heliker.
I actually fully agree with Gabe. I think our teachers are really educated on where our kids are at and what their needs are. I don't think every school's going to be the same when it comes to these issues, so I think we need to trust our teachers on that, and I think we need to spend some budget on teaching them how to address those things. Give them training around how to talk about it, how to have those conversations, to recognize those behaviors, and actually do it in a way where it respects not only the child, but their families and their communities.
Thank you. Chris Tischer.
You know, it's something that we see within our community today across the nation, issues with racism, you know, issues with white privilege, issues with institutionalized racism. What I feel is it's never too early to start talking to our kids about that. The sooner that we can get them engaged in the conversation, get them an understanding of it, the better we're going to be long-term in eradicating these types of issues in our society.
Thank you. Matt Laux.
Well, it's ironic that this came up because I taught second grade last year, and we discussed this very thing. So I don't think, there isn't a age that's too early. We had a morning meeting where we discussed race, what it means for my students who are ESL students, what it means to be discriminated against, to be put in a bucket, and how you address it. I think the best way is to be honest with students and give them the opportunity to speak their mind. You'd be surprised how insightful students are at a young age.
Thank you. Erica Allenberg.
I think our school community has come a long way with trying to engage families of color with our community talks that we've had, and bringing in authors from minority communities here. I think we have a long way to go. I think some things that we could do is, A, we could, we do a great job in the early primary levels of teaching respect and tolerance, and there's curriculum throughout all the different grade levels using historical frames of reference. When you talk about Martin Luther King Jr., when you talk about Rosa Parks, those are all lessons to be learned for everyone that involve these issues. But I think, to everyone's point, we need to trust our teachers. They're going to know where the students are at, and I think it's very important that we make sure that we listen to our teachers, and I have the stop sign, so I'm going to stop right there. Thank you.
David Goldstein.
So I think coming to a resolution on these issues of equity begins with a realization that we all have a great deal in common, and there's much more that unites us than divides us. But that the second phase is to realize we're not all the same. We have different cultural backgrounds, we have different economic opportunities, there's a lot that's different. And it's only when we get both halves of that do we start to get this right. That doesn't come naturally, it comes with training of teachers, and staff, and students. And it doesn't come from having some segregation of what we're teaching. It comes from integrating all of these concepts into history, into art, into everything that our kids are doing, in not a heavy-handed way, and in a way that involves the community and their families. And when we do it right, we have progress.
Thank you. Owen Michelson.
Race has been the source of a great deal of pain in American society, and as a society, I think we can take great pride in the tremendous advances that we've seen. Edina itself has seen great advances. Edina used to have housing covenants against blacks. That's no longer the case. I think there's times to celebrate the fact that we've made great progress. And regarding incidences of discrimination, I think that they ought to be addressed as they come up, and sensitivity ought to be given to all groups of individuals. I think we need to celebrate our heritages. We have Martin Luther King Day, and we celebrate that. To celebrate our differences, but to stress our commonalities, to realize that we're Americans working together in belief in our freedoms as Americans.
Thank you. Chad Bell, please.
To answer the first part of your question, which I believe was, what do we do about racism that occurs? The first question, the answer to that question is fairly straightforward, is it's never okay. It is not something that we're going to put up within our schools, or in our community for that matter. And whatever, if that happens within our schools, whatever our policy is, needs to be fully enforced. The second piece of this is that we talk a lot about what we want the schools to do to teach things around institutional racism and other issues. The families play a huge role here. The schools cannot be saviors. If we have these situations that are occurring, we have to look at a macro level here. Schools, community, and family are Venn diagram, and they meet in the middle. In this particular case, no matter what policies we put in place in the schools, I'm not saying we shouldn't, if they're not reinforced at home, it falls on deaf ears. This is where our community needs to play a role in the education of our kids.
Ellen Jones, please.
Yes, to answer the first part of the question about racism in our schools, I think the community is quite concerned about racism. And my experience with the schools my kids went to was that we have always taught inclusivity. So I want to just make sure, there's been some talk around social media about racism in Edina, and I want to make sure that that message is, the message is clear that we are working our hardest to combat that. I believe that our core values of compassion and appreciation of diversity are very important and are talked about. As far as communicating when it is appropriate, I've got to stop, but I think we do, there is no time too early to begin the concept of compassion. Thank you.
Matthew Fox, please.
There are a lot of great things said here. I'd like to, in my 45 seconds, break it into two buckets. The first one is, there's a passive approach, and one thing, being from multicultural family myself, my children have felt very welcome in the Early Learning Center when they come in and different parents are coming in to teach about a day of what it's like to live in Ethiopia, or in other parts of the world. So there's passive ways to introduce different backgrounds earlier on that normalize differences. Children can ask at any age, "Why does that person have a different skin color? Why do they eat differently?" And that starts to gain an acceptance and understanding. In terms of the active approach to when do you start to push the idea of what is and isn't tolerable, like what Chad said, it's also in the home front, and we have to trust our teachers. So somewhere in that grade school level, you start integrating the more and more complex conversations, but it starts with that passive normalization that everyone is here with the best intentions in their hearts.
Thank you. Faisal Deary, please.
So I would add also, when we're talking about color, probably all the labels you may think about may apply to me, or a lot more. And when I decided to move to Edina, we thought about it, and we researched, and I consider Edina as a very good place, a tolerant place, and a place that we can raise our kids. So I have two kids, and I wouldn't have proud my kids if I had any concerns. So if there are individualists or individual incidents, I believe that that's where I can bring a unique perspective, where I have spent for the last 20 years of my life, you know, doing a corporate governance, corporate setting policies. So that is where we need to have a policy, and we need to address it at the policy level. And we need also to engage parents, so that way it's a community engagement and parents. And also, we need to understand that kids need to learn to read and write at an early age.
Thank you. We're going to do our first lightning round question now, and you must answer in one sentence. I don't really want to interrupt you if you go past it, but I will. Okay? So what is the biggest challenge facing this school district? The biggest challenge in your mind? Matt Laux.
I think the biggest challenge right now is properly defining what personalized education is, and coming up with the right way to measure the growth over time.
Chris Tischer.
I see the biggest challenge is to stop teaching for testing, but rather teach for a love of learning. The byproduct should be, our students are doing great on these standardized tests because of the way they're being taught, not because of the fact that we are teaching to test.
David Goldstein.
We know how to do a lot of things well, we don't have enough money to do them.
Erica Allenberg.
I think our biggest challenge is our budgetary constraints, because from our budget stems our ability to do almost anything, from managing our classroom sizes to our teacher resources.
Heidi Heliker.
I would agree with Matt. One of our biggest challenges is personalized learning and defining that, not only for our high school level, middle school, but also our elementaries. I think our teachers need that support from us.
Faisal Deary.
I would say our biggest challenge with limited resources and time, how do we make sure that we maintain our excellence, and also make sure that our students are prepared to compete in this global economy?
Chad Bell.
I think our biggest challenge right now is the breakdown in how we communicate with each other. We need to get, we need to take our debate and make it more constructive around how we're going to drive better results for our kids, and maybe take the personalization out of it. We need to improve our discourse.
Gabe Adherhal.
I would say the number one issue our district faces is the growing class sizes, and if you look at the polling data, that is the number one issue that voters say is of concern in the district.
Ellen Jones.
I believe that the biggest challenge is figuring out what the, with this ever-changing world providing what our students need and the skills and experiences that will make them successful in the 21st century.
Lisa O'Brien.
The biggest issue for Edina Public Schools is that across our district, 21% of our students are not proficient in math, and 20% do not make proficiency in reading.
Owen Michelson.
I think while we have many things to be happy about in Edina schools and can claim a lot of success, I think that there are some areas where we're keeping our eyes coming off the ball, and we can afford to focus a little bit more on rigorous curriculum.
Michael, Matthew Fox. We were just talking about that. Sorry.
Still one sentence. So I think the biggest, the biggest challenge we're facing is taking a really good step back from a process-based approach and figuring out, how do we take all these one-off issues, roll them up, look at what does success look like for students? And then you build a budget, and then you build the needs, and then you bring in the community, and you get to solutions together.
Okay. Our next audience question is, "Are you being supported by a political party or PAC? And if so, are there particular positions you have been asked to take?" Erica Allenberg.
No, not unless my husband and children count as a PAC.
Faisal Deary.
My family are supporting me as a PAC, so that's the only one I'm aware of.
Ellen Jones.
No, I am not being supported by anything like that.
Heidi Heliker.
I'm not being supported by anything as well.
Lisa O'Brien.
I'm not being supported or pushed by any political party, no.
Matt Laux.
No, I put students above politics.
Owen Michelson.
I belong to a political party, and that party has been helpful to me, but they are not endorsing me, and I'm not supported by any PAC.
David Goldstein.
No parties, no PACs.
Chris Tischer.
Same, no parties, no PACs.
Matthew Fox.
Just my wonderful family out there with the kids making noise.
Chad Bell.
Matt stole my answer. No, no parties, no PACs.
Gabe Adherhal.
No parties, no PACs.
All right, that was quick, good. Next one, "How do you feel about standardized testing such as MAP and MCA as ways to track student growth and fulfill Edina's all-for-all mission? What, if anything, should be done differently?" So we want to know about standardized tests, tracking student growth, and the all-for-all mission. What, if anything, should be done differently? And we'll start with Matthew Fox.
Thank you. So when it comes to standardized testing and the approach to make sure that every student has what they need to reach their highest potential, one of the most important things is to think about testing, in my opinion, as part of an overall package. So if a teacher is trying to work with students to understand how to meet their needs, testing gives you a barometer for where they are today, and can also be a bit of a tracking mechanism. But I think we have to look at the whole student and understand what their strengths are, what their challenges are, what opportunities have been presented to them. And therefore, from that standpoint, we can see what the whole picture is and deliver more needs and resources to those students to be successful. So for me, testing is a portion of assessing where a student stands, but it's not the whole picture.
Matt Laux, was that?
Yep, Yep. Laux, yep.
I think this is a great question because it gets at the heart of what Edina could be if we take this challenge on. Standardized tests do provide one piece of information, but the MCA has a bar and measures whether or not students reach that bar. There are other tests that measure how well a student has grown based on where they were at the beginning of the year, or wherever the test was. More importantly, as someone who has worked with ESL students, there is a test every year to track their English language development. So we would be much more excited about growth there than some artificial bar that somebody who just moved here is not going to reach.
Chris Tischer.
I kind of alluded to this earlier. You know, my position on it is that while standardized testing is a necessary evil for us to be able to see where our students are from a progress standpoint, that our focus shouldn't be on teaching, or teaching to be able to test. Our focus needs to be on teaching the kids the skills that they need, excuse me. And a result of that will be good test scores. So I think, you know, what we need to do differently is, I would like to see us step away from focusing on one to two weeks of teaching kids and preparing them solely to take a test, but have that as more of the longer-term goals for the students.
Lisa O'Brien.
Standardized testing is a tool to measure growth and to assess outcome, but it is only useful if it is timely, and it is used and interpreted correctly by our staff, and it is used to adapt and change instruction. is used to adapt and change instruction. Otherwise, it's just a time that a student takes a test and it's not helping the student grow. I don't find it, it's an evil. I think it's, it's vital that we assess how our children are doing and we are held accountable to make sure that they, we made our goals.
Chad Bell.
You know, based on what I hear from my seventh grader, my biggest concern on standardized testing is, is we put the teachers in a position where that is, all we're doing is teaching to a test. Regardless of how I personally feel about it, it is a piece of what we need to do in the, in the schools and it's a part of the program that we put in place for our students. And unfortunately, it's also a way that we're, how we keep score is how we do in these tests. And those scores, unfortunately or fortunately, affect how our community is looked upon in terms of education. So it is an important piece, whether we love it or not, and we need to make sure that we teach to it accordingly to Lisa's point, but it is just a piece of it. It's not, it's not all encompassing, in my opinion.
Heidi, Ellen Jones.
So I've been, I've been listening and I agree with so many of these comments. I agree that it is an important measure, but I believe that it takes too much time from learning. I believe that also that we should be using the results. There's no reason to be testing if we're not going to be using the results in order to track people's growth and help them.
Heidi Heliker.
Yeah, as Ellen said, I've been listening to everyone here as well and I think it's a, it's a good point. It is, it is a base mark of where our students are at, but I do believe it's not the whole picture. Not everybody's good at test-taking. So how do you get that picture of who's really good at and not good at it? So I would be curious to understand more about that growth testing so we can really see where our students are going from where they were at one point and growing throughout the years so we can have our teachers address those things right away upfront and work with our students to get them to that next level.
Erica Allenberg.
I think we need to realize that a lot of these standardized tests are mandated by state and federal law. And I think I would like to see our district have an assessment plan, which we don't have right now. What are we testing? Why are we testing? Can we make the data actionable? Right now, we have half the elementary schools that are testing in the winter and half of them that are testing in the fall. And I think that we have to some standardization as to how we're testing and why. As everyone said, it's one, one measurement of a student's achievement. We need to make sure we have a holistic picture of how our kids are doing. And to echo everyone else's concerns, we just need to make sure we're looking at what pressure does this put on students and teachers to teach to the test. And my main concern is how many teaching days it takes away from other curriculum to teach you these standardized tests. Thank you.
Faisal Deary.
I strongly believe that tests are not the only way to measure a student's success, but also we want, we need to understand that it's part of some of the data elements that we need. Someone who spent, you know, throughout my life analyzing millions of data, we need to understand the scores of our students and that's one of the indicators, how well they're doing. I do not believe that teachers should focus only teaching tests, but I believe that we need to look at where we fit in the MCA and other tests so that way we can measure the success of our students. Because if our students are not succeeding as those tests, then there must be something that we're missing. So that's where you need to set the policy and enforce those policies that ensures that all students, and we mean when we say all for all, and we live up to that promise for our students.
David Goldstein.
I think there have been lots of good comments about this. It's obviously a longer conversation than one can have in 45-second increments. The only thing I would add to what's already been said is, as Erica pointed out, many of these tests are required under state law. No matter what we do, our children are going to end up being evaluated by tests, whether it's the ones that we're talking about here or later, we're talking about ACT or SAT. We do our children a disservice if we're not preparing them to deal with tests, how to take them well, how to deal with the stress. And for those kids who have problems with tests, how to manage it and how to succeed in other ways.
Gabe Aderhold.
I definitely believe there is a little bit too much emphasis on standardized testing, but I think one of the bigger issues that we can gather from this question is that partnership with our state legislature. As some other candidates mentioned, you know, if we want to remain a competitive school district and just Edina Public Schools move forward in a path that was different than the majority of school districts, then that could be problematic. And so I think it's time that we build those partnerships with our state representative and state senator and make sure that we're working on pushing for more of a universal plan to make sure that our, our students and our teachers do not have to be focusing so much time on standardized testing, not only in Edina, but across our state.
Owen Michelson.
Standardized tests are valuable gauge, but done indiscriminately. We have too many of them. There's a temptation to teach to the test. They are oppressive for teachers to teach. As has been noted here before, a large part of this is out of the hands of the school district and as Gabe has just said, some sort of partnership with the legislature to do some creative thinking about these tests, I think, is in order. And one suggestion I've heard is to somehow do away with the MCA tests for high schoolers and instead use the ACT, which is valuable and meaningful and has a second meaning. And so to reduce the, the number of tests we have. And so just to think out of the box.
Thank you. We'll do another lightning round. And this one, you get a one-word answer. But you will get a chance to elaborate on the next question, so don't feel too bad. Are you for or against the levy referendum? Ellen Jones.
For.
David Goldstein.
Four.
Owen Michelson.
Four.
Faisal Deary.
Four.
Erica Allenberg.
Four.
Heidi Heliker.
Four.
Chris Tischer.
Four.
Matt Laux.
I can do it in no words, I've got the tag, yes.
Gabe Aderhold.
Four.
Chad Bell.
Four.
Matthew Fox.
Four.
Lisa O'Brien.
Four.
It's unanimous. That says something. For the next question, you now get 45 seconds to answer. And the question is, how would you allocate the increased funds if the levy referendum passes? How would you allocate the increased funds if the levy referendum passes? Chad Bell.
First thing I would do is look at the strategic plan we have in place and the current initiatives that we have earmarked and based on what the board at the time voted on and then also the new representatives, certainly, of course, if I'm on the board, that would be new. And decide if this is where we want to spend our money and why. And then put through a rigorous process as to who we're going to, who we're going to focus on. But I would say we want to prioritize it based on the needs of the schools and the specific individuals and then go from there.
Owen Michelson.
I would increase special funding, funding for special services and for Paris.
Lisa O'Brien.
This, this is partly a renewal and partially an increase in funds of additional fees. And these additional funds are really to address the gap that we have had over a series of years between what the state provides and what our increasing expenses are. So this isn't to have a pot full of money that we can create something brand new. This is to keep the lights on, to keep, to keep our teachers in the front of our students and to keep the heat on. It really is for operations.
Ellen Jones.
Okay, so we all had an opportunity to talk to the leadership and I, I asked the budget director about this and, and she had told me, I asked her if, if it was possible that with these increased funds that we would not need to reduce any, any programs. And you know, what Lisa was saying is that we have to reduce our programming every year. And she was not able to tell me that we would not have to reduce our current programs. So I, I don't have a plan for what we would do to spend this money because I believe that it is, as Lisa says, we are going to need that funds just to keep the lights on.
Gabe Aderhold.
So the operating levy does offer an opportunity to make sure that we can keep the lights on, but the renewal does also include an increase. And I think that it's important for us to prioritize allocating that funding to areas where we might be seeing cuts. We have teachers in some of our, our schools that do not necessarily have job security because of potential budget cuts. And I think that our number one priority should always be about money in the classroom, making sure that teachers can feel secure about their jobs and not have to worry about them being cut. And I definitely think that that money should be first and foremost spent on classrooms and teachers and last, on consultation services.
David Goldstein.
I've had kids in the Edina school system, in the public schools, for 23 years. And over those 23 years, there has maybe been one or two years where public education has been fully funded by our legislature. We have had cuts almost every year that I've had kids in school. That's not going to stop. The referendum keeps us going. It makes, it will avoid having to make cuts that we would otherwise make, but we should have this crowd at meetings of the legislature, we need public education to be properly funded by the state and federal government. There's not a lot to play with. We will continue to be creative in budgets, we'll continue to try to do better. We always try to make sure that it's the classroom and the teachers that are protected, but this is not going to be a windfall for anyone, folks. Sorry.
Faisal Deary.
This is what I think I can uniquely, you know, talk about. I spent 15 years, like I said, in my life doing an auditing and budgeting and also forecasting and also making sure that finance is optimized. So here is where we need, how we ended up being, you know, using all the levy as an operating expense. So there's not a lot of room here based on the numbers I've looked and based on the last five-year budget I looked. This is necessary for the school to survive and for this district to keep operating. So this levy, although it's renewal and also when you add that to the inflation, it, there's not a lot of room. So that is where I would go and look at the line item. And once I get more data, allocate based on the best resources that would impact keeping our district as an excellent place to, to educate our kids.
Heidi Heliker.
Yeah, I would agree with Faisal. I think learning a lot from Lisa and all the previous people up here, I think understanding that this, but this renewal is actually to help our schools survive. I think if we take a look at line-by-line item, we'll have that opportunity to maybe push some of that funding in different directions where it could support our teachers and our classrooms, because I think those are the most important things that we need to support right now as our teachers and classrooms.
Matthew Fox.
So really good points are made. In general, this levy is needed to make sure that we can sustain what we've been doing. We've been cutting about $850,000 per year on average for the last 10 years out of the budget. So one thing we should be thinking about doing though is when we step back and look at what we spent last year, what the gap is and what we want to do for people, it's a bit of a retrospective analysis. So we should say, what does success look like for all of our kids? Step back, how much money do we have? What goes to which contracts that are in place? And then how can we be creative? Minnetoka works with Cargill to bring in different resources for their Gift and Talented Program that's paid for by private partnerships. So I think that there's lots of ways that we can be creative. We should be talking to legislators, we should be thinking about what we need to do. It will not be a windfall coming in with the levy, the levy is needed. But there are many ways to think about what does success look like for our students, work with the community, we have a lot of experts here, and then find new ways to serve our students.
Matt Laux.
I always like to think of what is best for students. In this case, I think the next marginal dollar should be spent on educators and specifically PLCs. We have a more diverse student group. There's more diverse students in our schools. There might be English language learners, you have different needs. Why not give our educators the time to coordinate and collaborate so that those students' needs are being met? You know, gets back to some of these tests, there is information that came from those tests. Certain students, certain educators notice a behavior, they should share, share that with their team so that all students' needs can be met.
Erica Allenberg.
I echo what everyone has said, especially David Goldstein, about if we're really concerned about funding here, we need to talk to our state legislatures because we have been funded at around 1% for the last 10 years and our costs have been about 3%. So when you have a budget gap that much, that leads to our $850,000 that we've had to cut every single year. This is really to keep our, our operations going at the same level that we've kept going. I don't think we're going to have a big pot of gold to pass out. And we have to realize that 85% of our budget is set based on salaries for staff. And so there's a very thin margin there that we, that is discretionary spending. But if we are going to have any sort of spending, if I could prioritize it, it would be on paratime to give back some resources that we've taken away from teachers the last few years.
Chris Tischer.
I concur with the statements of everybody else on the panel here that, you know, the levy here isn't getting us additional funding to be able to apply to new programs and new opportunities. But at the same time, it doesn't preclude us from having the opportunity to take a look at what we are spending our money on today. You know, where I would look to reevaluate and redistribute resources, if possible, would be in the area of personalized learning. You know, being able to focus more on the individual students. What resources can we give to our teachers and what can we do to empower them and allow them to be able to focus more on the individuals as opposed to focusing on a broader group?
Okay, next question. How will you consider the views of the entire community and not just the loudest voices on social media? How will you consider the views of the entire community and not just the loudest voices on social media? Owen Michelson, you begin, please.
The school board represents a public institution and it is incumbent on the school board to represent all voices in the community. And none of us are endorsed by a political party. We have to take into account what's best for the, all the kids in our school district because this is a public institution and schools are fundamental for democracy. It's not just for any particular interest, it's for the vitality of the economy. So we have to take a broad perspective and we cannot be parochial with our interests and we have to actively solicit as many opinions as we can and to be as broad-minded as we possibly can be.
Ellen Jones.
So I think that one of the things that I would be doing as a school board member is trying to meet with people. And I have the unique ability to have the time to do that. So I would be making sure that I would be listening and that is exactly part of what I have done with my experience in Edina. So I would be listening, but I would also base my, my actions on my values, which is always putting the child first. And that is, no matter what noise is out there, if you base your decisions on those values and what is best for the child, then you are going to be making the right decision.
Gabe Aderhold.
I think it's really important for school board members to take time and, and go around the community and not just potentially their own neighborhood, but every elementary school and make sure that we're talking to, we know that a lot of voters in school board elections are those that don't even have kids in the district right now. And that's great because we all care so much about our schools. So I really do believe in that community engagement, whether it's holding town hall meetings or having coffee conversations with individual voters. I think it's really imperative that we open up new channels with our city council and with our student population. I don't believe that either of those areas have full connections with our school board right now. And so I'll be someone that is looking for proactive ways that we can listen to all voices, young and old, those that have kids in the district or not, all aspects of the political spectrum. Everybody, voice matters, all for all.
Matthew Fox.
So in my role with the company that I run, I'm managed by a board. I also sit on some other boards of a biotech company and of a rare disease company. And the role of a board is to make sure you're working with the administration, you're communicating with the community, and you're managing expectations. We've had a lot of things sneak up on the community, whether it's understanding what's happening with school start times, whether there are levies, whether things are landing around open class, you know, open enrollment and class sizes. If we're communicating proactively and we're building a good operating and strategic plan, which is what I'm pushing for and I've built throughout my career in different disciplines, the community won't be surprised when something happens or comes their way. We should be engaging openly, we should be communicating clearly, and we should be managing expectations. So when a one-off comes up, we know how to measure that against the balance of community input because we've been doing it every day.
Faisal Deary.
This is why I like data. So I think as, as, as a data-driven decision-making process is if we're very transparent, whether you're part of the loud voices or whether you're not, those who participate. If you base your decisions based on clear decision process and clear results that would benefit the students, that's what you will be guaranteed if I'm sitting, if I'm elected at the board. What I will do is I will make sure every single decision I make that I can pack up, share with the loud voices and others and show them how we came up to that process. Once people understand and appreciate the process, then all would be happy, whether regardless that they don't disagree or don't agree with you. Always data. Always data, fact-based decisions are always supported, because you can show that. And I think I've also uniquely positioned to be ambassador for communities that are not fully engaged. So when we engage everyone, I think we will benefit.
Chris Tischer.
I think one of the best things that we can do is making sure that we are transparent with community, as far as the decisions that are being made. And that's going to help address those issues where you have kind of this squeaky wheel that's making a lot of noise as far as what, what they want to see. As long as we continue to be transparent in the decisions that are made, basing on facts, basing on the best interests of students, that's what's important, and that is going to allow us to be able to hear all of the voices in the community as opposed to just listening to those loudest ones.
Lisa O'Brien.
I represent the entire community, the loud voices, the quiet voices, and everything in between. What I will say is we need to resist judgment. Those loud voices have valid concerns, and they also need to be respected. Their quiet voices may agree with district direction, but there are, there's a group of quiet voices who have given up trying to buck the system, try, given up trying to voice their concerns, because they have been met with a wall. So we can't assume what those loud voices or short, quiet voices, what reasons they're, they're bringing forward. We need to look, we need to not respond with rationalization, but rather generate questions to actually address what are those concerns, and then figure out ways to invite and reach out communities that we haven't heard from yet. Thank you.
Chad Bell.
Answer the first question around how would you handle the loud voices? And I think that we've talked about a few here, but number one, that I'll brand the tables, I'm, I'll always have an open ear, and I will listen. This is not going to be a popular role. If you want to be popular, I really wouldn't run for school board, that's your call, but I, what I would tell you is that this is a, this is a service job, and you are here to serve the students. The students are the output of the parents, and that's the most important thing in the parent's life. So you're going to get a lot of free advice, it's your job and your duty to listen to them, even if you don't agree, but you need to listen. And it's important, then, you make your decisions based on what's best for the greater good and the missions we're trying to solve, using data like Faisal talked about and some of the other things. But fundamentally, you are in a service position. If you want this job, big part of it is listening, and facing the fact you're not going to be popular.
Erica Ellenberg.
I think there are two major things to focus on. One is process and one is communication. One, I think we need to be very clear with community engagement, being honest with the community about how, when, and when their voice is going to be used. I think we see community input a lot, but then a lot of times the community doesn't feel like we actually use their input. And so I think we have to be very honest with people if we are act, when we're seeking their input, if we're actually going to use it. Second, I think we need to establish decision-making criteria for major decisions that are going to be used. And I think, like Faisal said, I think we need to make data-driven decisions. And I think if you utilize data, you're going to take a lot of the emotion out of it, and therefore sometimes all of these loud voices that are surrounding you, you can eliminate some of that. But honest listening, being very honest, and I'll stop right now. Thank you.
Heidi Hilliker.
I appreciate what everybody's said so far. I think it's, I agree with all of the transparency was not there. I think we need a little more transparency in the decisions that are being made and the data to back that up. I think a lot of the community did a great job of really being engaged with the surveys and being a part of the small working groups, and I think it's time that we just really provide them that transparency as what we, why we're using it, what we use it for, why we made our decisions based upon data. I think to, to Gabe's point, going to the schools, talking to the teachers, riding the school bus, figuring out what those kids need and figuring out what they're, what's working, what's not working, and where we can support them. I think there's a lot of the schools within our community that are not represented, and I think it's a time that we just take that opportunity to really represent our community as a whole.
David Goldstein.
I don't think there's anyone in the system who's better positioned to understand what our kids need, and giving our kids what they need is our primary concern. There's no one better positioned than the teachers, who, when the kids are young, are interacting with parents and the students, and who throughout the process are involved. So I, I would like to see a continued and even greater voice for the teachers, both individually and through their union. When we're dealing with the younger kids, clearly their parents, we need to look to parents for support in understanding what's going to best serve their interests. As our kids get older and move into high school, we need to be listening to the students' voices directly. And, you know, it is clear that the board needs to do a better job in terms of making sure that the community understands its processes, how the agendas are being teed up, and when their participation is, is possible to influence the process, and how they can do that in an effective way.
Matt Loggs.
One thing I wouldn't do is hold these forums where I'm forced to cram 40 into 45 seconds of what I really believe. But, you know, Michael Lewis wrote a book called The Undoing Project, where he looked at these psychologists and kind of, who had analyzed how humans decide certain things, and this concept of anchoring and adjustment is one that is, is kind of flawed, and I'm sure we all kind of fall prey to it to some degree, in that you have a certain belief, you seek out information that confirms it, and you push away anything that would be a different point of view. That's a problem. I would not do that. I would try to seek out a lot of different point, points of view in town hall meetings where there was more time to respond.
Thank you. The next question is, Edina has a number of good policies on sustainability that have been passed by the school board but are not being followed consistently, consistently in all the schools. For example, PTO green coordinator, active routed schools, recycling and composting. How would you, as a school board member, ensure consistent compliance to these policies throughout the district and move toward greater sustainability? David Goldstein, we'll start with you.
My phone number is 952-255-9295. If there's a policy that's not being followed, call me or another board member, we'll make sure administration is aware of it, and we'll deal with it.
Lisa O'Brien.
Exactly. Policies, as with any policies, it is the job of the board to create those policies, and it is the job for the administration to make sure those are being followed consistently across our entire district.
Matthew Fox.
My phone number is also available online. The thing that I would suggest is that we make sure that everybody running those policies that are responsible for them understand what that means. So what kind of time goes into it? Do they have the resource and need to execute them? But it is irresponsible to follow the policies, it is responsible to the school board to hold that accountable and to work with the administration. But one thing that we must make sure that we do is as we step back and look at all the things we're trying to do for our entire student body, that the policies make sense, that they're well explained to the community, and that they're able to be followed through on.
Chad Bell.
I would echo what Matt just said, I think that's a big piece of it. If we've got the policies in place, it's important that we just enforce them and we just use the standard procedure that we have. The one thing I would just add is let's make sure that we're putting things in place that actually benefit and that we're adding value, okay? Because we can do a lot, but there's a difference between activity and achievement. Just passing things just to put them out there, hey, that's great, but if it doesn't add any value, let's move on to something else. We've got plenty of other things we can do. But fundamentally, if there's a policy violation, let's follow the procedure, we'll hold the superintendent accountable to make sure they're holding the school accountable, and then, of course, you, the community, will gladly hold us accountable.
Chris Tischer.
Yeah, I would echo the statements of a lot of the colleagues up here. The one thing that I would add to that is if a policy's not being followed, you know, let's follow up with the administrators that are not following it. Find out, are there obstacles that are preventing them or hindering their ability to be able to follow it successfully? And if there are, what can we as a school board do in order to remove those obstacles from them so that we can be successful in those programs?
Owen Michelson.
I think this question operates on two levels, one of which is the policy. If there is a policy, then it should be enforced. And if the policy's not being enforced, perhaps there was too rigorous an adoption, adoption plan set in place for it, and maybe some communication needs to be created for more buy-in or understanding of what the policy is. The second thing is I think it's exciting that we're even talking about sustainability, because I think that that's a valuable commitment that many of us have in Edina, and Edina's taking a lead. And in many of the elementary schools, there are compost, I've seen 15 seconds, composting, and so we're leading by example in the Edina schools.
Erica Ellenberg.
Yes, I would echo what everyone else said. The board is to set policy, administration is to execute on policy. If something is not being followed, then the board obviously needs to find out about it. And sustainability is very exciting. I think that we could enter, I mean, the best ideas are probably going to come from our schools, from our kids, and I think it'd be great to have a partnership with the school system and the children to find out what are the latest and greatest ideas from a sustainability perspective, and make sure that we can actually sustain the policies that we have in place in the school system. Thank you.
Faisal Deary.
So I would, I would take it to two different areas. So one is at the governance level. So this, the board is tasked to set policies, not only to set policies, but also to ensure that policies are followed and enforced. So that's what's called oversight. So I would make sure that, I would look at the policies, and some of the policies, when I talk to my clients, including, you know, 4500, is that they have so many complicated policies that are complex and hard to follow. So one of the things that I would advocate is that we may need to make sure that our policies are simple and very clear, so they can be enforced. So it's our job as a board, elected board members, to ensure that the superintendent and administrative are following those policies and enforced.
Heidi Hill. I would agree with everybody up here. I think it's, policies are policies, they should be followed. But I think too, like to Chris's point, and I was going to say the very same thing, is finding out really why they're not following these policies, because there could be reasons unknown that we don't know. They just don't have maybe the space to do that, or there's something obstacle in the way, and really learning to understand what our schools' needs are when it comes to that and why they're not following it. Because we need to seek to understand. And I would agree with Faisal too, just, you know, with the policies, like be able to like explain to our students and teachers what the policy is, why we're having this in place, and the value of it, so that they understand and get the buy-in that we're looking for.
Gabe Aderhold.
I absolutely believe environmental sustainability is incredibly important and one area we need to promote in the school district. And so I kind of think of this question in two ways. First is, you know, we have so many policies in our school district, and of course, there's always going to be some areas that fall in the cracks. And our job is to make sure that these policies are followed, and I agree with the, my fellow candidates on that point. But I do also think that one area we can look at is a heightened urgency in focusing with environmental sustainability. Not only does it promote good practices for our schools and create a healthy, livable environment, but it also, I think, will make fiscal sense to be looking at the investments we can make. But policy needs to be followed, and we can make sure we're following up on that to see why it might not be.
Matt Loggs.
So definitely, policy should be followed. I think one of the great things about the board, from what I understand, is that each board member is basically a liaison with a school. So you get the chance to visit a school, develop relationships with the staff at that school, and that would allow you to ask more questions with regards to why isn't this policy being followed? Maybe it is a case of they gave students some, some of the jobs, and some students do it well, and some don't, and some need help, you know? Ask more questions and then use your own judgment.
Ellen Jones.
So I have been involved in sustainability issues my whole life. I believe in the importance of green, green policy and sustainability, and I really believe that we should be teaching our community the importance of that as well. So first, in terms of the policies, I do think that we talked a little bit about educating, why it's important. When you educate a child that it's important to take care of the planet, that lasts for years. And so I just want to, I just want to conclude in this 15 seconds, that it's important, these, educating is so important, and, and I would be making sure that the policies were understood.
Thank you. Our next question is, how should the board handle contentious issues with the community? An example would be school start and stop time. Heidi Hilliker.
I would get that one first, huh? I think the board, we really do need, like, the, the community did a really great job of putting together a different variety of plans for options for us. We reached out to them with questionnaires and surveys, and I think we really do need to listen to what they're saying and what the impacts are. I think that's, I know it's on the bucket, on the, on the topics to revisit, and I think it's a really good topic to revisit, because I think our community needs to get a voice around that. We struggled at the beginning of the year getting kids to school at various times, there were some bus stops that were missed, and I think it's a chance now for us to go, okay, hey, let's take a look, maybe we did, maybe we do need to make a change, maybe there are some other options, maybe we can, you know, look at things differently, because sometimes you don't know what you know, don't know, and you make mistakes and you learn from them. And I think it's an opportunity for us to reach out to the community and learn.
Erica Ellenberg.
I reiterate some things I said about the other issue. I think, I think with any major contentious decision like this, I think we need to publish a timeline about how and when a decision is going to be made, so the community understands exactly what the critical points are in that decision. I think before a major decision like this is going to be made, I think we should have a community input session, as opposed to having community members come to the board and speak and feel like they're not being heard. I think that we need to, prior to that, have parents feel like they can ask questions, and board and the administration can talk back to them. But I think we also need to have decision-making criteria, I think we need to have a clearly defined process, so parents understand what is going on. And I think if we utilize things such as that, I think it will be much more clear to the community, how and why these decisions are being made.
Chad Bell.
I went through this as a parent this, this year with the new start times, and it was obviously a challenge, but in the end, what we really need to do is, is we need to face these issues head-on, and we need to make the best decisions for the kids that we're serving. And that may not be in the best interest of a parent. I mean, I can tell you personally, we had to make some changes in our household, and that's part of the challenge you face, and you have to deal with it. In the end, I would like to see as much emotional reaction toward things around policies as I would start times, things that actually can affect the children in the classroom. This is not to minimize start times, I know it's important to us, but I would like to see that type of emotion around some of the other things we're looking at doing around policy and education, because sometimes, you know, when you have these conversations, we tend to talk about it as parents, how it affects us, we don't talk about our kids. And I think sometimes maybe we have to take a step back and realize we're, we have to do what's best. I'll stop.
Gabe Aderhold.
There's three ways that I would handle contentious issues that come up in the community. The first is that town hall format. I think it's really important that we have in-face, back-and-forth dialogues with individuals and not community members voicing their concerns and then not being heard or responded to right away. The second area is individualized communication, so that when someone does come to a school board meeting and address the board, that they don't get kind of a generic email response, but they get more follow-up and in-depth. I think that's really important. And the last area is being proactive. So often, what happens is there's a decision that's kind of been in the process of being decided for months, and then when it finally comes out into the public, it's, it's kind of too late, it's, it's the final vote. And so I think it's really important to be looking at potential controversial decisions months, if not a few years in advance.
Owen Michelson.
I would stress community communication. One is getting out in front of the issue very early. In the case of school bus times, letting the community very early on know what the trade-offs are. We've got a health issue here for the, for the older students, that we've got a budgetary issue with balancing the tiers of the bus routes. And letting the community adjust and think about what the trade-offs are, and then having the community input, and then valuing the input, and then making the decision based off of the tough decisions that have to be made, that's what I'd do.
Lisa O'Brien.
Issues are contentious, often because there's a lack of trust in the community in the process. There's a feeling that the decision has been made prior to getting input, and that this is just checking the box that we've spoken to you about it. We need to be transparent about what the issues are, that we have clear and reliable data to inform our decisions. We have to have the, a community opportunity to actually explain what the impact is that these decisions will have on them. That includes students, staff, and parents, and outside community as well. My goal has always been, as a board member and, and forward as a board member, to make sure that the community knows that I've heard their voices, I understand the impact, I'm going to bring that forward and use that to balance all those competing voices. Thank you.
Ellen Jones.
So in 1996, Edina was nationally recognized because it acted on child development research that showed that later start times boosted grades, attendance, and moods. We got that one right. That's an important issue. It affects, this is, this is an important issue. It affects learning, engagement, and safety, it impacts the family, and financially, it needs to be operationally sustainable. We need to get the busing right, we need to listen. Getting it right for this issue and for all issues... Getting it right for this issue and for all issues means that leadership should set clear goals, do their research on child development and what is best for students, clearly define the public engagement process, and follow that process. The process should be transparent and accountable throughout and maintain excellent communications with the community.
Matthew Fox.
So there are a lot of good answers given. I think we're all part of a team, and we're all on the same team. So we want to figure out how to solve these more contentious issues. There are two things that come to mind for me. The first one is, when I'm working with my teams in my company, I put forward a position statement and say, here's where the challenge is, here's why I think something a certain way. That enables some pushback. Having a very neutral position allows for a lot more vibrant discussion, but it also can allow for a lot more contention. So if you were able to come forth and say, as Ellen was mentioning, there are cost structures that pull against us, there are needs from the health and wellness side, right now we're leaning toward doing this. It gives people an opportunity to push back. And the second thing is to say, how and when will decisions be made? So that way, the community doesn't feel like things snuck up on them. So if we do those two things well across all issues, we'll have better outcomes.
Matt Loggs.
So I would start with what the data says, as Ellen indicated. If the data shows that certain age groups benefit starting at a certain time, then that's where you should start from. Then, what I would do is ask if there's any experts in the community on logistics or things like that, that we could actually solve the problem if we think, think of things in a different way. I referred in an earlier response to this idea of anchoring and adjustment, seek out a different view. Have we thought about, for at least my kids, Normandale and Southview are in the same lot? Could they be on the same bus? There's already middle schoolers for OLG on that bus. You know, what, what are some things that we can create creatively solve some of these problems based on data?
Chris Tischer.
Well, with any contentious issue, I think we need to come to the conclusion as a board that not everybody is going to be happy no matter what decision is made. That being said, you know, looking to do things like getting out in front of the public as early as possible, letting them know what the issue is, why we're making a decision on something, or, and being able to solicit that feedback. Lastly, you know, once that decision is made, making sure that we are transparent and accountable to the public as far as why that decision was made. If we've solicited feedback, make sure that the, the public as a whole understands how that feedback was utilized in the decision-making process.
Faisal Deary.
This is an issue that's so dear to me. So 10 years ago, my wife and I were, when we were raising five kids, and, and they all have different start times, so we can appreciate and understand, you know, the, the passion that comes from some of the parents that had some issues. So like Lisa said, I think we would need, first and foremost, to have a very clear data to back up our decisions. And also, this is very important as a board member, an elected board member, that's where we need also to have a unified voice, because there may be seven different ways to connect the dots. That's when you would need to listen to the community, also to listen to the board members, and come to a conclusion that's fully backed by a clear data, what's good for the kids, not what, what's good for individuals. So thinking about the greater good for the entire community would be my decision.
David Goldstein.
So we made mistakes when we handled the start time, and, you know, I think as board members, we've all spent a lot of time thinking about how to do it better, and I think we will do it better. From how we worked with the task force, and, and empowered them to come up with solutions beyond the original task we gave them, from how we solicited information from the community and listened to the community, from how we questioned the administration, and to the extent we allowed the administration not to directly answer questions that the board had. We, we failed in a lot of areas, and those failures made this a more contentious issue than it had to be, although this is never going to be an easy issue. So, you know, boards learn. This is a very, you know, this is a relatively inexperienced board. After this election, it's going to be even less so, but we'll try to take advantage of, of these experiences to do better.
Okay, I think we can fit one more question in here, because many of you will just have a very quick answer. What is your position on open enrollment? And if you do not support open enrollment, how would you replace the dollars that it generates? Okay, so some, if you, if you, if you are in favor of open enrollment, that's all I have to say. Okay? Gabe Aderhold.
I support open enrollment as it provides the revenue that we need to make sure that we are paying for services in our schools. 15% of students in our district go out of our district, 15% of students not in our district come in. The math does not work if we eliminate or significantly reduce open enrollment.
Heidi Hilleker.
I would agree with open enrollment as well. I think it also brings an opportunity for diversity that we get in a lot, small of our, small amounts of our communities, which is great.
Erica Allenberg.
I fully support open enrollment. It obviously is inextricably tied to our budget. I would like our, the board and the district to look at maybe having a two-tier open enrollment process, where we let in open enrollment to a certain level in February, see how many Edina residents move into our classrooms, and then let in more open enrollment children later in the year to try to reduce some of our class size issues that we're having.
David Goldstein.
I support open enrollment. We need to be intelligent as to how we go about setting what the numbers are, the target numbers for it, to make sure that it meets our revenue needs and that it doesn't interfere with having appropriate class sizes.
Ellen Jones.
Yeah, I support open enrollment. I'm, I want to realize that the, the picture might change slightly with the legislation that passed recently, sponsored by our state representative and senator, allowing higher priority for students that live in Edina to go to school in Edina, and I want to really thank them for doing that. I think that that's important. But I do support open enrollment, and I agree with Erica that it is important that we should be able to have another go at accepting students closer to the fall start of school time, and I, I think that that's something that we should be lobbying our state legislatures, legislators for.
Matthew Fox.
I support open enrollment. We do need to have a better process around it, so understanding at what point in time we're getting to our full capacity and what percentage of students need to come. We deal with it a little bit like a Delta Airlines flight right now, where we over-enroll, sorry, we over-enroll a bit early and a bit heavy, and then we look and see if those numbers are going to systematically, from data-driven perspectives, kind of narrow down to make sure we have the right class sizes. But instead, if we put stage gates, whether they're earlier in the spring or throughout the summer, we'll do a better job of managing our class sizes, so all students have the personal attention they need to meet the needs around equity, to meet the needs around reaching their full potential. So open enrollment's good, but we need to do a better job in working toward that and working with all students.
Matt Loggs.
I do support it, and I think the city should view it as a great opportunity to show other cities that are going to start to look like us, what you can do with the human capital that's at our schools and the financial students, I'm sorry, the financial capital to meet the needs of all students.
Lisa O'Brien.
We're very fortunate in Edina that we are so attractive to other people in other communities that they want to be here. That's a good thing. But we need to make sure that we balance open enrollment with the, the issues of class size. And when we have, when we're off, we need to do a better job of making sure, doing a good, deep data dive. Why are we off on those, on those data points? How do we address it so it doesn't happen again? Open enrollment does provide a valuable resource for our community, and it is important to balance that. Thank you.
Owen Michelson.
I support open enrollment. It supplements the budget, it brings in a diverse, diverse student body. I'm also wondering why we have some families leaving too, and I'd be interested to learn why are some families leaving and making some of these openings available, and to do some sort of exit interview. And are we losing some families that are paying taxes for our schools that otherwise would want to stay here? But in principle, open enrollment is a good thing.
Faisal Deary.
I agree that open enrollment provides us the support we need from a resource perspective, and also to maintain our excellent education. I was in Dubai a few, few months ago, and, and when I, someone asked me where I leave, and I said, Edina. The first thing they said is, oh, the city with the best schools. So that's why people are coming from, you know, all over the state, and we want to support that, but we want to also make sure that we maintain that excellence. We want to make sure that we have boards that are innovative and, and spend some time more on the strategy, not on the contentious issues, so that we, we can compete in the global economy and prepare for our kids tomorrow's jobs, because the jobs we have today may not be available 10 years, 20 years down the road.
Chris Tischer.
I'm a little bit biased in my support of open enrollment, as my daughter was open-enrolled at Countryside before moving to Edina, so definitely in support of it for all of the reasons that have been mentioned so far. You know, diversity, you know, bringing in people from surrounding communities and be able to have that as part of our community or educational community, understanding that is necessary in order for us to have the financial resources for our school district. But at the same time, making sure that we're being responsible with it, so that we're not stretching our resources too thin.
Chad Bell.
Like Faisal, I was somewhere about a month ago, it was Des Moines, not Dubai, but this came up with some old high school friends about Edina and the great schools that we have. And, you know, look, I think, we're on the same page here, we all agree with open enrollment, it's a question of how we execute it. I think Matt brought up a great point. I actually think open enrollment's a great opportunity for us, I mean, how to create a program that is, make it even better. I mean, I, I think this is where we can put our heads together and kind of figure out what's the best way to do it. We should feel blessed that people want to come into our school system, and, and certainly we want to share those opportunities with them. So, yeah, I think this is one of those easy ones, we should be able to come up with a great solution to meet the needs of the students. And I love Owen's idea about, let's find out why folks aren't wanting to join us. Is it, you know, like in my case, when I was a kid growing up, it was religious reasons, is it whatever? Let's find out, because I think we can learn. It's another data point that we've talked about up here that might help us make better decisions.
Now we invite the candidates to make their closing statements, they each have one minute, and we'll start with Faisal Deary.
So in my beginning, I said, one of the reasons that we moved to Edina was because of the best education that it offers. So as a closing point, I want to make sure that voters understand that at the board level, we need someone who understands more than $100 million on how to spend, someone who has spent and managed, you know, and audited billions of dollars, not millions of dollars, someone who can understand the line items and how best to allocate resources, someone who can challenge, you know, superintendent, but also work with the superintendent, someone who can bring a unity at the board level, because schools that have dysfunctional board levels, it all goes down to the teachers and administrative. So I promise, being part of the board, I will bring that unity strategy and making sure our schools remain excellent. I'm committed to that excellence, and that's one of the reasons I also would bring and want to be privileged to be part of this board and volunteer my time and resource. I'm committed, I will spend as much time as it takes to make sure that four years from today, we're in a better position.
Thank you. Matthew Fox.
My background being the closest to Faisal, going right after him's kind of funny. So from my perspective, if you look at my history and what I've worked on, well, first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for being here. Kathy, you've done like 300 reps tonight, so I, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. From my perspective, when we look at what a board needs to do, I've lived those things. I've personally managed over $100 million as a portfolio manager. I've built corporate strategies that you don't just give and walk away, but you have to stay and implement in a pharmaceutical company, and I've worked with families and foundations to make sure I understand their needs on a personal level. I bring that same background, that same drive and passion. I have two students that'll be through the system over the next 16 years, so I'm here to stay. You look at me 16 years from now, sitting out there, my knee's clicking right now from door knocking, but I won't be able to stand up by then, just from all the effort that I promised to put in from a commitment perspective, but from collaboration with the community and from a creativity side, bringing in public and private partnerships, I think I have a unique background and opportunity to do that. So I ask for your vote, there's more online about my background, and look forward to the next debates. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Loggs.
Yeah, thanks again for all your work in putting on this forum and for inviting me. I, you know, all the experience that I have and stuff is on the website, and I, I am not the kind of guy who likes to read from a script, so I was trying to think of the best way to sum things up here. And a lot of people have asked why I'm, why I'm doing this. And, you know, I put on this suit coat today, and I hadn't worn it in about three or four months, and the last time I wore it, it was when I went to the graduate, graduation of some students I had, who I taught in fourth grade, who finished eighth grade, now are in ninth grade. And sometimes you find, whatever, Pez or gummy bears or whatever, you know, we're all parents, there's crap all over in this stuff, but I found this. So here, and this is why I'm doing it, is the students. These, this is the reason I teach, it is the reason I want to be on the school, school, school board. It's all about the students. My goal in life is these students who I had in fourth grade, now in ninth grade, are on their way to college, and it's that same focus that I'd like to bring to the school, school board.
Owen Michelson.
Thanks, League of Women Voters. This has been a great presentation, great opportunity for us to communicate with you all. Education must be the first priority of Edina schools. It's essential to, we equip our students with the skills and knowledge and critical thinking they'll need to be ready for college, work, and citizenship. What's more, it's essential Edina schools teach our children how to think, not what to think. This requires teachers to teach their subject and for classes to represent a broad and rigorous curriculum that's tailored to our students' abilities and interests. Moreover, we must avoid fads in education and recommit ourselves to educational fundamentals. This is essential to reverse declines in test scores on prominent high school reading and math tests that we've seen. With our caring and distinguished teachers, this goal is within reach. As an active community volunteer and many-year parent of Edina students, and as a high-energy collaborator, I'm eager to promote the educational mission of Edina schools. It's what's best for our kids.
David Goldstein.
My ninth-grade English teacher, Jean Feldman, and my third-grade teacher, Ms. Steinkamp, I was too young to know she had a first name, and I still don't know what it is, changed my life, and that's something I have wanted to pay back since. It's something I talked about at this forum four years ago, and something I've tried to do on the board for four years, the last four years, to try to give teachers the space and what the resources that they need to do their job, because overwhelmingly, folks in Edina agree, our teachers are great and do their jobs well. I want to empower them to do that, I want to give our students what they need to succeed and take advantage of our wonderful teachers. That's why I'm running for the school board. I hope I've achieved something toward accomplishing those goals over the last three and a half years. I would ask for your vote and chance to spend four more years trying to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Bell.
I opened with, you know, why I'm running, and I guess I'll close with the two. I mean, I, a little bit about me that I didn't talk about, I have a corporate background, you know, similar to Matt's, in the sense of I've managed in Fortune 50 companies, large budgets, large teams, bringing things to fruition, professional presentations to boards, CEOs, high-level negotiations, things like that. That all comes natural to me. But while I'm running is because I'm a dad, and that's really who I am. My kids call me other stuff, but that's pretty much who I am. And this is important to me. I care about our city, I care about how our kids perform, and this is the most important thing in my life, and it is for most of the people standing up here, if not all. And so for me, if you vote for me, fundamentally, what you'll get is a dad who wants to listen, who has the background to do the job, but has hopefully the empathy to listen to what you have to say. I'm not always going to like the decisions, you're not always going to like the decisions I make, but I'll be accountable for them, and you'll be able to find me, even if I try to hide. So I appreciate the time, and thanks. I'm Chad for edina.com. I have signs in my car, they'll double the value of your home, pick one up afterwards.
Gabe Aderhold.
Over the past 10 months, I've had the great privilege of meeting with dozens of teachers and students, active community members and elected officials, and I've studied the issues, I've attended school board meetings and workshops and held forums, understanding the complexities of personalized learning, school start and end time, education, finance, and a whole lot of other challenges. When I was door-knocking in my neighborhood recently, a, a student at Edina schools answered the door and said, please listen to us. The student came to the door and said, please just listen to us. I don't necessarily have the same background as many of the candidates here, and I will not, I don't know what, what that saying was by Walter Mondale to Ronald Reagan about youth and inexperience, but I am so excited to be a candidate and to have this opportunity, and I hope I can earn your consideration this fall to bring that student voice to our table and make sure that we're advocating for our teachers and for all of our community members. Thank you.
Chris Tischer.
I would just like to echo, echo the statements as far as thanking you for putting this forum on for all of the candidates to be able to interact with the public. this forum on for all of the candidates to be able to interact with the public. You know, the thing that I look forward to is, is running as part of the board, is getting out and meeting with all of the individuals that are part of the community, and hearing your voices, understanding what your concerns are, and ensuring that I work as part of that community, with our administrators, with our teachers, to be able to find out what we can do to further the education and put our students in the best position to succeed, ensuring that Edina maintains and continues the excellence that it is known for within Minnesota. So, thank you.
Lisa O'Brien.
I'm running for reelection because I love Edina. I love Edina Public Schools, and I have a passion for kids. My background in child development and mental health and wellness brings a different perspective to the board that hasn't been there frequently in the past. When I ran four years ago, I promised that I would help the administration prioritize its goals. I promised I would press the administration to get data to support their decisions. I promised I would listen and understand the impact that decisions may have on you. I promised you that I would ask the questions that you were thinking at board meetings. I kept those promises. I'm asking for your vote this time, so I can ensure that this new team, this new administration does set off on the right path, goes the direction that we need, that we support as a community, and that keeps our primary mission in, in our sights, which is to educate our children and to support their intellectual growth. lisaobrien.org. Please come see me outside. Thank you.
Erica Ellenberg.
I hope that I've shown you tonight that I have the skill set, work ethic, and breadth and depth of knowledge to start making a positive impact to the school board on day one. I'm not an unknown quantity. I have a proven track record of commitment and hard work for the students, teachers, and citizens of Edina. I have firsthand knowledge of parenting children through all levels of our school district, and with different educational needs. And I'm not only passionate, but trained in seeking data-driven results. My top priority has always been, and will always be, working towards excellence in education here in Edina. To me, being on the school board is not just about giving back to the Edina community. It is an active form of governmental service, requiring a commitment to students, exercising responsibility, possessing a vision, demonstrating leadership, and providing accountability to our community. I would be honored if you trusted me with a seat at the table to make decisions on behalf of our students, Edina's most precious commodities. And I'm electerica.org.
Ellen Jones.
How we educate our children is who we are. Edina has built a legacy of excellence in education. I want to maintain our legacy and make our schools better. I believe that Edina's board should work to ensure achievement for all students, all abilities, healthy learning environments, responsible fiscal management, and most importantly, the school board needs to be proactive. If elected, I would work to actively support and empower our most important asset, Edina's teaching staff. I'd work to ensure optimal class sizes, and look to our future. I would require transparency and accountability. I know there are no shortcuts in effective public service. I will commit the time it takes to research, listen, ask questions, and follow data-driven best practices. My vision to make Edina Public Schools the paragon public school that welcomes all students, supports their well-being, inspires all students to realize their potential and achieve their goal. I do this by upholding my basic value of putting the student first in every decision that I make. I would be honored to have your, your vote.
Heidi Hilleker.
I kind of want to go back to, kind of why I moved back here. I came back here for the school district and the community. I think this community is amazing. I, it's so funny to me, like, when I go to soccer games, and I see all the second, third, fourth generation of my friends coming back here, because they know the school district is good. And that's one of the reasons I'd like to run to the school board, is to make sure that, ensure that our, that our school board is holding each other's selves accountable. We're following the policies, we're questioning our policies, we're making mistakes, and we're learning from them. That's kind of the opportunity that we have as a school board, is to learn from you guys, ask questions, seek your advice, listen to the whole community, not just the community that we live in, knock on doors, listen to you, come up with data, decisions why we made, so we're transparent of what the decisions and why we made them. And sometimes look back on our decisions and change. Because it's, it's a growing times. I mean, 2000, like you, Faisal said earlier, the jobs we have today aren't the jobs we're going to have tomorrow. So it's our opportunity to kind of build that foundation for our students to have the learning, the learning and the capabilities and the facilities to get what they need to do the job. Thank you, candidates, for participating tonight. You all did a terrific job, and I'm especially thankful for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Edina schools are well-served by so many citizens that are willing to serve students in this way. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters Edina for sponsoring the forum. This forum has been taped for broadcast on Edina Community Channel 16. The rebroadcast schedule has been distributed to the live audience, is available online. The forum will also be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters Edina website, lweedina.org. It will also be on the City of Edina's website, edinamn.gov, and on YouTube. Thank you for attending tonight's forum, and please remember to vote for four of these candidates on November 7. Join me in thanking the candidates.